All right, Commissioners, well, that takes us to item E1. And we could consider taking E1, 2, 3 together. Is that something? I know this is an item that's sponsored by Commissioner Thompson and Anderson. Is that something you'd like to go ahead and take together?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, let's go ahead and do that. So, Commissioner Thompson and Anderson, would you like to bring, walk us through this?
I would. So, I voted for that last case very reluctantly. And I voted for it reluctantly for two reasons. One, because we're voting for affordable housing. You know, we're granting someone some density in exchange for affordable housing, but we didn't do that. You know, they promised that they're going to make affordable housing and, you know, but we have no way to actually control that, and we have no idea of affordable for how long, affordable for, you know, the first sale, the first rent, a year, 10 years. And we have no control of that whatsoever because it's not part of the VMU. And we can't enforce that because we can't force, you know, inclusive zoning as part of a condition of zoning. And the second reason I was reluctant is because the deal that was made is at 80%, and the neighborhood has already, you know, bargained for a 60% or has wanted a 60%. And we couldn't say, "Okay, well, we'll give you the GR VMU, you know, if you, you know, if you go to 60% instead of the 80," because that would definitely have been illegal. So, what I've asked for today is, I thought from other cases we had had like this in the past, that it was definitely off the table to have VMU on something that was non-transit corridor. Today, it sounded like, well, maybe it would have been on the table if the notice had been right or if the process had been right. And so, I'm just, what these three things are really asking for is for staff to go back and clarify. And what I would like for them to clarify is that, yes, if you are property, you know, that is within a quarter mile of, you know, a corridor, and that can be an Imagine Austin corridor, it can be a future transit corridor, it can be a transit corridor, or, you know, just transit, you know, a good bus line, that having VMU should be a tool that is available to you. And it still would have to come through all of, I mean, we're not rezoning anything. We're still would have to come through a process just like what we saw tonight, and we would still have the chance for the neighborhood to, you know, agree or, you know, disapprove or not agree. And other conditions could be placed upon that in terms of, you know, site area or height, you know, just like there was tonight, you know, putting limitations of height. We could still do all of that. Compatibility would still exist. It's just another tool in the toolbox for us to do something like what we had tonight, but with a little bit more rigor and enforceability about it. And I don't think that staff understood what this was about. I think everyone thought I was trying to, you know, rezone a quarter mile from each corridor, and that's not at all what I was trying to do. So, I would actually ask to postpone this for this evening and to have staff come back next week or next meeting and give a presentation to us on exactly, you know, clarify what they think that the rules are today and sort of go through what the, you know, sort of the history of VMU, what the status is today in terms of, you know, the 60% versus the 80%, what you get for it. You know, you get the parking reductions, you get these things, and just sort of give us a briefer again on VMU and what we think we could, what the problems are with it today and how much affordable housing is produced in the past, you know, since it's been out there. So, I'm going to move that we postpone this, the actual vote, because I know some people are not comfortable with it, and I know some people, and I've heard a lot of people in the community who were not comfortable because they don't understand what I was trying to do, so staff can come back and people can get an idea of what we're trying to do.
Yeah. And to move forward with this, and I think the concern or the issue of, you know, is when you read this, it says, initiate, to initiate a code amendment, it doesn't ask for study. It's talked about initiating code amendment, one.
Right.
Number two, it says, be established, not to be studied. Right. You didn't say to study or anything like that. So, I'm wondering if maybe what we could do is, we could close this and you could re-ask what you want versus postponing the way this is written and this is asked as initiating code amendment.
Right. So, I'm saying to initiate, establish the VMU area, but the VMU area meaning where VMU is a tool that can be utilized, not that that land is rezoned VMU.
So, can you re?
So, I'm happy, I'm happy to work with staff over the next, we get three weeks, actually, for the break, over the next three weeks to come up with a new phrasing of this that makes everybody comfortable, that makes it very clear what's trying to, what we're trying to do.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Shaw.
So, I spent a better part of the weekend reading the VMU rules because, and they are really confusing, but getting back to what I said, there's this whole section. I think the rule has tools to get what you want, and that's why I agree, we need staff to come explain.
Yeah.
Because it's just not on corridors. It talks about other roadways that are eligible for VMU and VMU buildings. So, I think there's tools in our toolkit.
Yeah.
But I don't think we understand how.
Exactly.
How the public can use them. And so, I would like to know more about the rule and how to use it.
Parliamentary inquiry. I believe we have a motion on the table. Do we get a second? And are we now in discussion?
No, sorry. A second.
Okay. So, we have a motion and we have a second to, well.
Have staff come.
Well, I want to clarify, because to postpone it means that it is written as it's written. It is the agenda item postponed. To take it off and start over, it's another thing. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because to postpone it, it's exactly how it's written. I want to clarify that. You can make another motion, it's like, "All right, let's go ahead and close this," and you will come up with a new introduction with a new item.
Can I, can I suggest that Commissioner Shaw and I work together on a new item?
Okay.
That we can?
So, I am, I am in favor of postponing this item.
As it's written.
As it's written. I mean, what I want, Commissioner Thompson, I would like to hear from staff, as you propose is to educate us on the rule as it exists and how it gets us where you want to go.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I want, if, I guess, if the rules exist, don't exist now, to get us to where we can put VMU on, you know, we can put a V on the property we just saw. If those, if that's not the law today, I want that to be the law.
It seems like there's the opportunity for the ask. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yes. I just wanted to reiterate what the chair has said, which is that if we postpone this item today, it's going to reappear with the exact same language at your next meeting. So, if you would like instead to have an item where we come and discuss VMU, then I would say what we do is take no action on this item.
There you go.
Repost with new language that says, have staff come discuss VMU.
But I guess the reason I would want to postpone instead of that is because at the end of that discussion, if you tell me the law says, "I can't put VMU, put a V on the property that we just saw," then I want to initiate a code amendment that says, "I can put a V on that property." That's my, that's my goal. So, I wanted to be able to put a V on that property. I couldn't.
And part of, the concern I have is a public process of this. There is the ability to come through and get the findings of fact first, then it derives what we're going to do. But to go ahead and put what you want to do before you understand the facts is concerning to all of us in the public, because we don't know yet. So, I appreciate what you were trying to do, and to me, it's like we should go through no action and you can come back with new language, and then with the findings of fact, you can go and you could make this recommendation or initiation as you would like. Because if you want to go forward as, you know, as, let's say, as a postponement of this thing, then I will ask, you know, Mr. Guernsey to come up and talk about his comments on specifically what we're asking. And if you're not, then it's a non-issue at this point.
So, I guess I'm, I'm willing to close this down.
Okay.
If, if we come back next time with, but I want possible action. After hearing the, after hearing the finding of fact, I want possible action. So, however, we have to notice it on the agenda for that to happen.
But the possible action, I mean, we don't know what the possible action is, because we don't know the facts. So, to me, it's like they present, we can discuss it, and then you can bring it back up as another agenda item. I mean, that, and that gives the public time, it gives all of us time to understand and even look through and research the findings of fact versus if we just do it on the dais, that's, I don't know. I think that's, that's pushing it for all of us as well as even for the, for the public.
Chair.
Yes.
So, you may, you may give him the option of withdrawing or not, because you may not speak for all of us. There may be folks that want to.
So, and I'm going to go cross over here, so we'll start with Commissioner Anderson or we'll start over at the end.
I agree with you, Commissioner, Chairman. I think we, we need to get all the facts, have staff present, and then if we decide that we need to initiate a code change, then we do that.
Okay. Anybody? Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner McGraw?
You know, as Director Guernsey has said, this is, this is pieces of Code Next coming back at us when Code Next is supposed to be off the table. And I really don't see why we started, and I started this work to try to understand the neighborhood planning situation, which staff has now given us some answers, and we could get a briefing on that, which would be wonderful. That was asked for in August. But for us to spend a lot of time diving into this, I think it's out of order. I think it should just be withdrawn and let's talk about it next year, if it seems germane. But I don't think, to me, what this tells me is, we need, first of all, to understand the initiation process, because I think it's a very lengthy process, and I'm not sure exactly how it works, and staff would need to give us all of that information to understand what that means and where it goes and how many steps there are. And then, there's a lot of research we need to do, because we have no idea, this is a citywide change, that if this is a citywide change, it's a citywide change without benefit of petition rights. So, there are a lot of things involved in this that make me very uncomfortable, and I do agree we need to know more about VMU, and that's fine, but maybe that's 2019.
Commissioner Kenny.
Commissioner Thompson, I would just say that, you know, any two commissioners can submit an item, you can submit it with the exact same language again after consulting with staff, or you can modify the language to perhaps be a little bit more descriptive and clear on what your intent is. So, I concur that I would like to see action, because no, this isn't a citywide change. No petition isn't something that's valid, because it's not actually a change to the zoning of any actual parcel, it's just an option. And having an option available, I mean, let's be honest, like, optimistic case for a comprehensive land use change or rewrite to happen two years to effective date? How many affordable housing units might we lose in the intervening time by not being able to apply this? Something that would actually be simple and maybe be three phrases within the Land Development Code? It could potentially be a great tool for us to use as we continue to take cases over the next one, two, God forbid, three, four years, as we rework through our Land Development Code. I think that the memo from Director Guernsey was perhaps in, with the understanding that this was actually applying the layer to all properties, and I think a lot of other people reacted as such, but I think considering that your intent would be merely to make it an option available, that that is far more modest in scope and fully within reasonable changes that we could make in the interim as we try, as I agree with Commissioner Anderson, I mean, just tonight, perfect example of how, I mean, I spoke a lot with this applicant over the course of their case, and we were going through all these different categories and saying, "God, all of these suck." You know, none of these really fit what we're trying to do here. I wish we had better tools. So, I look forward to action and, but perhaps the item could be redrafted.
Okay. Commissioner Schisler or Commissioner Kozie?
Yeah. I think clarification is really what's needed on, on the code. It's such, such a mess. I mean, it sounds like, from what we heard tonight, that anybody in the city that had a property could, could ask for VMU zoning, you know, staff would probably oppose it or the neighborhood might oppose it, but the option's there. So, just a briefing to clarify that would be, would be fun with me.
Okay. Commissioner Kozie?
Yeah, I think I agree that there's some tools that are available already, like Commissioner Shaw said, but that staff is hesitant to apply that precedent, and that's the conversation that needs to happen, is what is that hesitation and is that, is that, is that valid and how do, how do we feel about it? And then, how does council feel about it? So, I think most of the rules might be there. I think we're still going to need action, so I would, I'm still leaning toward leaving, leaving the action portion and postponing it. You know, as far as it feeling like rehashing Code Next, I mean, we've always had code amendments that any two commissioners could initiate, and then it goes through the Codes and Ordinances Subcommittee and does its work there, and staff does some work. What I'm unclear about is how staff prioritizes and what, what say does the commission or council have on, on placing a high priority on, on an initiated item? So, yeah, like I said, the tools are there, but may need, need more, more action than, than what's already there.
I'd like to ask Mr. Guernsey to come up and maybe you could, you know, depending on which way we go or which way our discussion is, I mean, if you could enlighten us on your memorandum here. And I don't know if this is available to the public, if they've seen it.
It was posted.
Sure. Commissioner Lee's on it, or is posted on your webpage?
Okay. Thank you.
Greg Guernsey, Planning and Zoning Department. Yes, the memo, I took the language that I saw, I guess that was posted on Friday. As it, as it's written, it speaks to doing amendments to the Land Development Code to establish the vertical mixed-use district, basically the overlay on each commercial zoning district for all parcels within a quarter mile. I actually took that to be, we were rezoning property within a quarter mile of all these corridors. It would be something that we went through over a considerable amount of time of doing an opt-in, opt-out process for the VMU corridors. So, that's how I read the first item. The second item, dealing with the vertical mixed-use overlay and the mixed-use districts. This was, looked like a code amendment to allow VMU buildings in, in all the MU districts. Not as something as, as an option. I think it was, I looked at it as an amendment to go do that. And then, the final item, item number three, would be changing the commercial districts, all 13 of them, to allow multifamily and condominium use as a permitted use. So, in essence, it would be allowing an MU district in all those commercial districts. So, it was on the basis of that that I moved forward. I did get a copy of the resolution. I'm not sure if it clarified as much late today and took a look at that, but that's what I read into the posting language that was presented to me. And so, that's the basis I, I wrote this memo.
Okay. All right. So, we have a question. Commissioner Kozie's got a question.
Mr. Guernsey, so, based on what you heard today, does your memo still apply? Because it wasn't, that wasn't the original intent, so.
Well, it's something that certainly would staff would, would discuss. If you were to make the change and understand, talking with some, some of the commissioners, that there are some changes that I know that would be made, because there, just the third item, for instance, about applying multifamily and condominium residential use in our districts, there may not be standards that may be in existence today that I think the commissioners that sponsored that may be bringing forward some clarification to that. And also, allowing the VMU building is only an option, is not necessarily being automatic.
Right.
That's, that's quite different, too.
Right.
So, I think there is probably more discussion for staff to get an understanding of what's proposed, because I looked at it as a very dramatic change, and I know that we spent hours with this commission and other commissions talking about VMU. It was very different than what staff was proposing under the proposed code, and it would have possibly some effects on neighborhood housing that I would want to discuss after I get a better understanding of what's being proposed.
Okay. So, wait, any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll keep going this way. Actually, Mr. Burkhart hasn't spoken.
Mr. Guernsey.
We're going to give him the floor.
So, as I, as I understand what's being proposed, and maybe you can kind of clarify the conflict that I see, that would, adding a V to any of these proposed parcels would allow basically no minimum front side or no minimum street side or front side or side yard setbacks anywhere it was allowed?
Well, if you opted into, if you were to take advantage of the VMU building, yes, there would be parking reductions, you could take advantage of.
So, in the middle of a block, you could have a building that was built right up to the property line on the street side, on the front, if that were not the street, and also.
It's my understanding what you could do in a vertical mixed-use building.
Just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Thank you.
Like, Mr. Rustovin kind of went through some of that.
He did.
Any, any other comments? Mr. Seager.
Yes, I welcome a robust discussion on VMU, the applicability and what the original intent of VMU is. When I'm reading these resolutions, I get a very different view of what the original intent was, and I find it very troubling that we would even consider putting in, and you guys that want density, I think there are other ways of doing this than putting a commercial-type building with no setbacks in the middle of a neighborhood, whether it's my neighborhood or anyone else's neighborhood, because the property owner decided that was what he or she wanted. I think that this is setting a terrible precedent when we're looking for any way to bring density into our residential and commercial areas. I will not support this. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, it does. Yeah. Okay. And, I mean, I think, I think, I mean, for me, I welcome a robust discussion about this, and even the whole process of how a neighborhood can start supporting this, because my understanding from previous cases, it has also go through a neighborhood plan amendment. So, even if somebody comes in and says, "I want to put this thing right in the middle of a block," it's still going to have to go through the neighborhood planning, you know, process to get that amendment. So, we'll hear if there's a buy-in from the neighborhood, whether they want it or not. And it's interesting, because what if the neighborhood wanted the street to somehow turn, you know, get a V? Then at least there's that opportunity. But I want to know what that process is, and I want to know that even in neighborhood planning, that, that discussion gets brought up. Previous case, I wish, I really wish that that neighborhood had the opportunity to think about what that V meant along the whole corridor. Maybe it's something they want, maybe not. We don't know. But that then gives the opportunity for us. Once we know that, then we can support it or not, but that tool should be there. So, I welcome a robust discussion about this, and hopefully that becomes a toolkit that we can put, not, you know, it's not just for the commissioners, but it's for the neighborhood, and it's for the developers, and for all of us to work out together. So, considering that, and again, so I have, I still have problems with how this is written to, to make this as a, I mean, that's personally, as a postponement. I don't mind if you bring it back. It could be for discussion and action, but maybe stated differently, but change the exhibit so it's not as like direct. Quarter mile, establish, more like quarter mile, discuss or potential, things like that. I would be supportive of that, but that means we don't take action, you just come up, you come back with something, because as Commissioner Kenny said, two people can come up and say, "Hey, we'll put this on the agenda." So, I mean, I welcome the two of you guys to come up with something and put it on the agenda, you know, maybe work through with staff. But Commissioner Shaw?
I'm pointy, I'm just trying to figure out where we are. I mean, there's, there's something I want to say, because everybody keeps looking at me, but I have a very strong opinion about something that I need to say, but I don't know if it's the right time. So, are we just having an open discussion right now?
We are.
Okay.
And so, what I'm trying, I'm trying to go through, and then I get to say something, and I'll let you guys in, and then it somehow comes back to me. So, now it's back.
So, I really want to know, staff, you know, what this rule allows, because what I hear is there may be some effort to discourage use of this code provision, and I don't want that to happen. We need to understand what it allows, and that's the rules that everybody has to follow, and we need to know what those are. And neighborhoods need to know what those are. But I do not support any changes to the code at this time, because we have a very big election coming up. We have propositions that are the people's voice, and I think we need to push any code changes until the new year, when we figure out when our new, you know, council's going to be, and, you know, the mayor, and figure all that out, and then address these code changes. And also, Prop J comes or, if that, we may want to take some actions at that point, but there's so many unknowns at this point. So, I just don't want to do anything until New Year. That's, you know, code changes.
Okay. Commissioner Lee?
I agree with what Commissioner Shaw just said, and I would say particularly in thinking about the context, and while we might learn things that make us think these are good ideas that are being proposed, I'm also mindful of the fact that other ideas might come after that, that might directly impact it, say, adjusting the compatibility setbacks or stepbacks or new uses that would be allowed, that maybe I would have wanted to have thought about before I made a decision one way or the other about VMU or the other things that are listed in this resolution. So, that's why I wouldn't be in favor of taking action right now, but I would like the information.
Okay. And any other comments, Commissioner McGraw, or?
Well, since we have talked about this a lot, and we did not talk very much about the third one, which is to add multifamily to all commercial districts. And a point that I think we miss a lot of times, the city started kind of selling the MU idea, which was put into the 1985 code, but the issue with MU, it's kind of like continuing the old cumulative zoning, because it says, "Oh, if you have MU, you can have commercial or residential, or we don't really care, just build what you want to build." And I don't think that's planning. I know along Guadalupe, there's a long stretch that's all commercial, and our neighborhood was really happy to have all of that commercial. Here's a place for businesses. It's great. And before the 85 code, back in the cumulative zoning, somebody decided they wanted to build a little apartment building, so they put up this little apartment building gated right on Guadalupe, right there, where you really want to have commercial and you want to have pedestrians interested walking up and down. And so, I don't think that the general application of MU can, is very productive, because it means if, if a neighborhood has looked at their neighborhood and said, "Here are the places where commercial's really good, and we'd like to have commercial," you could easily lose that if the market says, "Let's all build apartments." You could lose that opportunity. So, I think item three concerns me a lot, and I think it's a much more serious consideration than we might be thinking. And I think that of all of these, we're going to be thrown into a lot of work to consider these. And I would still like to hear staff explain fully the initiation, because I'm confused about, do we initiate? Does council initiate? Then where does it go? How many times do we go to codes and ordinances? You know, I think we're looking at a pretty long process, too. I'm not very clear on it.
The commission or the council can initiate amendments.
And, and, okay, so we vote, we initiate, then what?
Usually goes to your Codes and Ordinances Subcommittee.
And then?
And then it comes back to the commission, Plan Commission, and then it would go to City Council.
So, what if it is something that applies to areas that are addressed by Zap?
That joint Codes and That Joint Codes and Ordinances Committee, usually that's where it gets aired out.
So then it goes to both commissions? Would that be right?
No, it only goes to Plan Commission. You share, I think, the Joint Codes and Ordinances Subcommittee.
But it comes back here, and it would not go to ZAP, even if it addressed some code changes?
No, ZAP might weigh into it, but it's not a requirement to go before them. The Plan Commission is in charge of code amendments.
And so then, from, after it makes a trip to codes and ordinances, it would come back here and then go to council?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thanks.
And that's been the process for quite a while.
I know, I just don't always remember all of it. Thank you.
Commissioner, any other comments? Commissioner Anderson?
First, I'd like to second Commissioner Shaw's comments, the code is very confusing, yes. So I'm happy to hear that the memo won't come into play, I'm glad we kind of clarified those misunderstandings. We heard from staff just two weeks ago that we're kind of failing miserably on a lot of our housing goals in the strategic housing blueprint, so I'm really excited to see what comes of this, and what you guys present to us in three weeks. Mr. Rustovin, take notes. So I know there's some concern about, you know, do we just suddenly do this, and what does the public think? So I think it's important to recognize that we're only initiating, that's all that would ever happen, it's just an initiation, and then it would start that big process, and it'd go through a lot of things, and then it'd come back to us. Probably months after that, we know that code amendments take a very long time in this town. I also know that there's often strong resistance anytime we look to make moves to make the development of housing easier, but I think as a board, we can get there, hopefully. And then last thing for staff, as I understand it, there's an email that refers to housing advocates as density zealots. I'd love to see that email, if you guys could somehow get that and share it with the board, that'd be great. And thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate, Commissioner McGraw's concern with, I guess, number three. I mean, it's when areas are stated that they would like to see mixed use, and there are oftentimes, you know, a lot of it is to get that walkability to different types of shops and services, and we see if developers come in, and all you see are apartments, more apartments, or condos, condos, I mean, and, and then what was supposed to be a very nice mixed-use corridor ends up just being a slew of more, just a bunch of residences. And I'd like to know how we can get it so the requirement would be there, or at least be built in somehow that we could still get that. And I see a lot of visions and desires of neighborhood plans that, you know, these, you know, even, even the things that we vision that, that get lost when that happens. So, I mean, I'd, I'd love to have discussions about that. But I'd also bring up that the F5, the, I mean, and I don't know if some of these discussions can go under F5 revisions of the Awesome Land of Urban Code, because a lot of the stuff that we're talking about, and, you know, could be put into that category where those discussions come up. And that's kind of what I was hoping to be here when we put this as a placeholder, to be able to talk about topics like this. And it could be, you know, and we had said at one point that maybe that we would take that, and someone would put up different topics to discuss in that, and maybe that's where this resides, or it could just be its own item, you know, but that, that, this is specifically what that placeholder was there for, to have these type of discussions. Okay, any other comments from commissioners, before we see what we want to do? Okay. So there was a first and a second. I haven't repeated the motion, I mean, is that something? Sorry? Okay, all right. So commissioners, what would you like to do? I mean, we, we could send it back to Commissioner Thompson, and whoever you want to help craft something and bring it back, and get with staff on what our ask is. And I think a lot of the discussions here tonight helps craft that, what we'd like to hear at some point. And I don't know if it would be at the next meeting, or does staff have to bring back, but, I mean, if you could maybe work with staff on that, talk to Andrew and Mr. Rustovin and Mr. Guernsey, and then put something on the agenda.
I'm, I'm happy to resubmit an agenda item for next time, that clarifies.
Okay. All right. All right. So then that would conclude our discussion for E1, 2, 3.
I'm sorry, so we can't make a request to staff tonight?
So.
I'm just.
Just to be clear, I, I am going to make the request to staff.
I mean, you, you can, but right now.
But we're not losing any time, because we can get them on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
You could, well, I mean, if it's a presentation or briefing by staff, it's up to them and when they can get their stuff together at that point. Okay.
Chair, Commissioner Layton, it's currently posted, you may want to withdraw the item and take action on it.
Okay. So commissioners, then, we're going to go ahead and withdraw the item, then? Do we vote on that? Okay, so do we have a motion?
I think the commissioner, I think the sponsor just pulls the item.
Yeah, you would have to just withdraw the item, is that correct?
It was already been discussed.
Okay, that's right, we just discussed. All right, let's close it out. Do we have a motion to take no action? Okay, we have first, Mr. Seeger, we have a second, take no action, Commissioner Schisler. Okay, all those in favor, aye, and then all those against, and then, okay, unanimous. All right, item E4 has been postponed, item F5 is, we have nothing.